Call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill Devil Health Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Let's get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As discussed, Mary, we will take a moment of silence to think about whatever you'd like to think about. Thank you so much. Thanks everybody for being here. We have an agenda before you. You've got a few minutes, a few days to look over it. Any questions or thoughts or trying to approve an agenda? Do you have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Couple of course of seconds. Take your pick. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. First item on the business of the agenda is a public comment.
No signups.
No signups. Anybody here interested, you know, you could speak for yourself or a group. Seeing no one scurrying towards the lectern, I'll give you a second or two to reconsider. Otherwise, I will close public comment. We'll move right along. Presentations, no. Old business. We're jumping right into new business. We've got a site plan review.
Yes, sir.
Meredith's gonna lead us off.
Yes, sir. As you know, the mission for an amenity for the Marriott was damaged in conjunction with the fire. It's located at 2029 South Virginia Trail. The site plan, just to invite Mike Robinson, who's in the audience, if you have any technical questions for him to reconstruct the amenity. It's coming back to you because it's going to be a slightly different footprint. You'll put a snap bar, a covered patron seating within the previous building footprint that was damaged by the fire. The architectural design's been changed from the original design, and the pool in front bathroom remained in place. As you recall, the site plan for this partial was just approved in May of 2019, and attached is the application, the amendment, and the building plans. And I'll be helping answer any questions you might have. Planning were reviewed on October 12th and approved it for your consideration.
Alright, so we had time to take a peek at this. Nice couple of adjustments there. Again, got the approval of the planning board and the recommendation of staff. But does anybody on the board have any questions or thoughts? All good. The recording getting me there. If there's anything else, we're open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Motion from Ms. Ingram. Do I get this? And we've got a second. Mr. Gray. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. Pretty work. Yeah, we're good. Short agenda there, so we're already to committee reports. Did you want to say something before the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
We need to represent, yeah, this is our community appearance commission.
Excellent, excellent. I know we're getting ready for exciting news down the road.
Hi, I'm Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. Just a couple of quick announcements. Surf Riders has assigned folks to watch over all the beach accesses and do cleanup, and actually, the CAC actually took one. We got one of the last ones. Saturday, we were scheduled to meet and do some stuff, and we did not. So we just want to tell everybody that Saturday, the 20th, at 10:00 a.m., we are meeting at the Avalon Pier, and our cleanup place is Eden Street, which is just a walkway. And anybody who'd like to join us, I hope you will do that. Our next Community Appearance Committee meeting is Thursday, the 18th of this month, which is November, I think. Anybody is welcome. Also, to let you know that later this year, we will be giving out our every-two-year annual appearance awards. So we look forward to that happening. An award for the most attractive, the most improved, and the best in a mall or connected building situation. That includes commercial buildings and churches. But the one thing that I really want to emphasize today to this big crowd we have is something really cool. You all decided not long ago to make the live oak tree the official tree of Kill Devil Hills. And that was a great thing to do. And then since then, the Community Appearance Commission has decided to make an offer to people to apply for one of several live oak trees that they can plant. Now, all of this is about keeping these trees that we have, increasing the number. It's a wonderful tree. I mean, how could you not walk in this door and not realize what a gorgeous tree that that is, that's over top of you with all those beautiful limbs and things? So our original idea was that we would make an award of 10 trees. We would take applications, review those applications, and make a decision about who should get the 10 trees. Well, and these weren't going to be little tiny seedlings. These were going to be good-sized trees so that they would have the best possible chance of survival. Well, I'm pleased to say that so far, we have received 24 applications for people wanting one of these trees. So four of those people sadly do not know they do not live in Kill Devil Hills, because they live in Collington. And we all feel kind of sorry for them, that they don't live in KDH, but they think they do. So those people will not be allowed to participate. But we're looking into, town administration is looking into, if we get more trees, can we get more trees for the same money? But at some point, we will make a decision on who deserves these trees. And we're going to do this, I think, every chance we get. And I hope you like the idea because it's a pretty good idea, I think. Okay? If anybody has any questions, that's fine. The only thing I want to say at the end, and this is a personal thing, although I think the members of the CAC would agree with me, those lights that you all have put up, and I think they're LED lights, and all of the walkways across the beach road are fabulous idea.
Great.
It makes a tremendous difference and lots, lots, lots more safety. So thanks to town for doing that. It's really cool.
Very good move.
And I'm done. Thank you very much. We don't have any questions or anything. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put me in front of a camera for that one, too. They made a video about those crosswalks.
They're great.
They're super.
We're gonna try to do them back here, next, in the Veterans Drive area for the school crossings and all that, for the football games and soccer games. As you see, all these people trying to get across the Veterans Drive. That's the next phase. That's the last phase, I think.
Mayor, is that an idea for out here, right? Oh, yeah. We were thinking all over the parking lot later, go LED, too. You know, we were trying to, as a town, you know, encourage people to do the right thing and have energy-saving bulbs and that sort of thing. So certainly, we could be, set an example here on campus. Set such a good example on how to take care of your landscaping, light it up at night as well.
We could approach Dominion Power and ask them if there's something that we could do together, like we have in other areas with them where we've switched over.
Right. I know that they had helped the schools out years ago when they switched.
We'll do that. We'll make a note. Thank you.
My personal agenda is beach access as well. Some of those light fixtures are starting to be vintage. Don't make those anymore.
Right.
So it'll be collector's items, right? Mercury Hall. Yeah, great stuff, and so excited about the trees. Love to do more trees, you know, just in the towns, places that we can plant trees. See if we can get that in next year's budget as well. Other commissioners, other committee reports, any? Commissioners' agenda, I know.
I've got a couple of items. And I was tagged by both the mayor and the county to go to the Southern Albemarle Association meeting. And I did, and found a lot of information that came out of NCDOT. First off, I'll say I do not want to be a spokesman for NCDOT, so I'm just sharing the information that they presented. And let me get right into it. I don't know how many people are familiar with the Southern Albemarle Association, but it was founded in 1935 by Victor Meekins of Dare County and Wallace Tatum of Terriff County and some others. Its stated purpose was to make the six-county area a safe and economically viable place in which to travel, work, and live through promoting better roads, bridges, waterways, and airports. The association played a role in the opening earlier this year of the Mark Bassnight Bridge over Oregon Island, the addition of passenger ferry service between Hatters and Oak Ridge Villages, and the resurfacing of a four-lane US-64 between Columbia and Crestville. So they're pretty active, and they accomplished quite a bit of stuff. The hot topic there was the Alligator River Bridge. And I went there with the intent of supporting that because I think for evacuation purposes, it's very, very important to us. I think also for bringing commerce into the area. It's important in that respect as well. And at this particular point in time, I would recommend that if anybody has any questions that they get with Craig Midgett, he's the Division One Planning Engineer with DOT, and he can certainly provide more information than what I have here tonight and what I've put in your package. The STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program, listed some different items, and of course, Alligator River Bridge was one of them. It's probably safe to say at this point that number one is unfunded. And I would say they're applying for grants, you know, to hopefully fund that project. It's funded, all of the roadside environment programs have been, you know, taken care of in all those agreements. And they're continuing to coordinate with the Conservation Fund and DCR Land and Water for the anticipated impacts of the Palmetto Pear Tree Preserve. Continuing design work for the bridge and the approaches. And the current estimate is $212 billion for that. So if you have any questions about the information, you know, I'll try to answer it for you, but I really don't have the answers. Craig is the guy to get up with. I think the mayor has under his agenda a resolution, you know, trying to push this issue forward at an earlier date than what maybe is included in the STIP program. So that was, that was pretty much that issue. So I don't know if you want to lead that into your resolution, or if you want me to go ahead and do my other issue that I have, or item I have.
Go ahead and do your last.
Do mine? Okay. The, I had inquired of town staff and of the attorney during this recent election. It kind of rekindled a question that I had a long time ago when I was on the board of why our mayor was a two-year term. I'm of the personal opinion it needs to be a four-year term, just like everybody else's. I think that we could realize some cost savings. From the perspective of having an election, I ask also the town attorney to look at any pitfalls that he could see that we might have. And I always thought we had a pretty smart attorney, and sure enough, he proved himself to be one. Because first thing he come up with said that it would be cost-effective and, you know, help save some money as far as an election cost. So that's a good reason right there if the town can save money. I don't want anyone to feel that this is an initiative in any way to benefit our current mayor because it's definitely not. If the board would want to proceed with this, I would strongly recommend that we not have become effective until after you run again for a two-year term.
Starting four years.
Correct. And, yeah, that's right. It'd be, what, 2024? 25?
Five years.
Yeah, 25. So I would hope that if the board decides to go forward with this, they adopt that date as well, you know, as an objective. But I think it'd be a good thing for the town. I think it'd be a good thing for the person in that seat. And it's going to require about four or five steps to start the process because you're going to amend, you know, the legal aspects of the town. And Charlene outlined for me the exact steps that it's going to take to do this. And I think there were five meetings, if I remember correctly. But we're going to have to amend the charter of the town if we do this. And was that right, Casey? Five meetings?
Yeah. There were, yeah, there were a few extra steps along the way when you're amending your charter.
Well, and I think that they're good because it gets the public involved in the conversation generated so that the public can come in for public hearings and so on and so forth. If y'all want to find out some more of this information, what I'd like to do is probably have Charlene put together this package with the comments from the attorney and put on the next meeting as an agenda item for discussion. But it looked like, and of course, you know, council's here. He can certainly have his opportunity to voice any comments that you'd like to, and Debbie as well. I think it'd be a good move myself. I really do. So with that said, I'll hush for a minute and let anybody, you know, kind of vent if they want to. Or if you want to wait and get the information and talk about it at another meeting, I mean, that's, that would be my intent.
No, I agree. I think it, I would like to see it be a four-year term as well. I think just for turnover and for, you know, training and getting used to the position. I think two years is, goes by very quickly.
Just getting started.
Right, right.
Yeah, you get a chance to sign the papers and sit down, and then you got to run again. And, you know, I don't know why they ever did it. Do we have any idea on that, Debbie? Why it was done as a two-year term?
Well, I know, I know the Commissioners being offset was for continuity. But, you know, I don't really know that that's, sort of, true in that position. But that was, that was one of the few things. It was before my time. But if it is something that the board's interested in, we can provide you the information that Charlene provided Terry, and still have you direct staff to draft a resolution of intent to considerate ordinance to amend charter. That would be on your December meeting. I know you're not in a hurry, but it sounds to me like you're very interested. So, you know, I don't really know how much more discussion you would have on it at the next meeting.
It just makes sense.
If the board is in agreement, then that's what, we'll send this to the other board members tomorrow. And with your direction, we'll begin the process.
And that is, as Debbie was saying, the first step. Like I said, there's a few extras here, which do. It provides the, I guess, takes away from the autonomous nature and allows the public to come in and discuss. So the first thing that would be presented would essentially just be a resolution or a resolution of your intent to begin the process.
Right.
And that would be what's for consideration at the next meeting, whether or not to even begin that process.
Right, right.
Right. And so if, for whatever reason, in reviewing this information or your constituents seem talking to you, you decide, well, we don't want to go any further, then that's fine. But it goes a little bit beyond just the talking.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty involved, and, you know, you need to, you need to make sure that that's the right direction you want to go. But I had these thoughts back in 87, 89, and, you know, that it just, it didn't make sense. Not to me, anyhow. And then the big concern was, I want to make sure that everybody understands this. I mean, I think it's well enough of you, but it's not to benefit you. It's for the future. It's something that needs to happen. And I wanted to say I thank Charlene, and I thank Casey very much for getting the information to me because it helped solidify my thought process, and excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Pass that on to Charlene. Thank you.
I will, you know, not be voting on this. I mean, I think that's appropriate, right, to stay from some?
Yeah, you're changing the charter.
No, you vote on that.
Okay. This uncharted territory for me. I don't know how to.
Well, I think that the proposal of the time.
Right.
The conflict is out because of the effective date.
Yes.
Okay.
We would be on fresh ground come that particular election.
Okay. Correct. That was, that was the reason that I felt like it needed to not affect you.
Not affect the next. Yeah, so it makes sense. All right. Lawyer says so, must be true.
At least it worked that way.
At least it would.
Yeah, really. So that's the direction the board is for us to present you with a draft resolution of intent at the next meeting and forward this information to the other board members.
Yes.
Yeah, it senses, yes.
Well, do it.
Thank you very much. And Mayor, I've talked enough.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate you.
No worries.
It's a good idea. No, I have nothing as far as my agenda.
Well, I just wanted to say congratulations to Terry and Ben and John. Congratulations.
It was a hard fall.
You were uncontested, but still, I think that speaks volumes as well, so.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thanks. I have one very small idea, just to bounce off everybody. And the video that we saw in the intro of our meeting really lit the light bulb off. It's something that Fisher and Gray and I discussed a few weeks ago was potentially, what they always look forward to every spring and early summer was when all the lifeguards came in and introduced themselves. You know, we couldn't do that traditionally in the past. It's a room full of lifeguards. Everybody got their basic info, said that to them. We got to have that kind of nice exchange. It was really a pleasant, fun thing. And whenever a new employee comes along, you get a nice email with their bio. And I would think it wouldn't hurt to invite them just to come in and introduce themselves to us at a board meeting so we could really get to beyond an email and a picture, make a personal connection with these folks. Because standing out here in Election Day, there was a couple of new faces. I didn't know. And I'd like to be able to, you know, have that one-on-one time and have a chance for that person to get to know us and for us to get to know them. I have that idea. Have you done that in the past?
We have done it in the past, but it was when the board meetings were during the day. And I think the other municipalities that do that have at least one, and the counties have their board meeting during the day. So we have, you know, we have some employees that live pretty far off, and we will certainly do what the board requires. Sometimes we get photographs of the new employees. We can certainly go back to doing that.
I think that would be great. I think it's probably asking a lot.
It could be an optional thing. It doesn't look far away. You don't want to be obligated, but invited.
Sure. Totally up to the board. I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's how we got away from it was. And at the time, I think the meeting, the meeting started at 7:00 or 7:30. And so, you know, if you've got somebody that has to be at work the next morning extremely early, you know, not the eight o'clock workers, but the ones doing the service work outside that start early, that can be difficult than, you know, to come to the meeting and then drive some as far as it was to city. Plus, you know, what are they going to do from the time they get off at, what is it, 3:00? 3:00 to the board meeting start. So we certainly can't expect them to drive home and then turn around and drive back.
I love the idea of photographs. Like, I love seeing when a new officer is sworn in, you know. So you get to see the photograph and.
I'll definitely go back to making sure we get the photographs and maybe see how that works and if you would still prefer the other. And certainly be happy to let any new employee know they're welcome to come.
It may be an invitation. Nothing, and we don't want to pressure anybody to feel that they have to do it. But, you know, it's up to that person. They're absolutely welcome, but come say hello.
Come say hello.
That's all I got there.
Sounds good.
Let's get out here.
We could go the other way, too. We could make a little selfie welcome video for a new board member. Send it to them.
Or we could do a monthly video sending to the board.
Oh, oh.
I like that.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. There you go.
And we'll probably have you introduce them because we need you and Oliver.
Every video.
Okay, good. We'll work on that. Thank you.
Anything that's good for flowy morale and keep us close and aligned. Good by me.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Alrighty, well, I guess that brings us to the mayor's agenda. Got a couple of items for you here. One, of course, Commissioner Gray has alluded to, there's a resolution in your packet that you probably don't need me to read all the way through, but it's a bunch of wheresses about why we believe the Lindsay-C Warren Bridge, the Alligator River Bridge, is important enough to move up the pecking order of things to spend the extra flesh cash in the NCDOT coffers on. There's certainly going to be some movement in the budget, so now's a good time to ring that bell and remind them that we're on Team Guess New Grids. That thing keeps breaking. So Commissioner Gray already hit all the high points about its evacuation rate and the things that, its age and multiple closures are the reasons we want to be a squeaky wheel about that. Second resolution that's in your packet is reaffirm, this is coming from Commissioner Ingram, reminding us at the last meeting, that from time to time, as often as possible, we like to reaffirm our board's continued opposition to offshore drilling and seismic testing and leasing offshore. We are, you know, a vital part of the state's revenue. We have a huge economy here, bigger than we look and bigger than we feel like we're represented sometimes. And the winds and thoughts about this change, and it's something you have to stay on top of. So it's been refreshed. We were reminded about it by the more recent offshore oil spill in Huntington Beach that closed a bunch of beaches over there, and things could be a lot worse over here if we ended up with drilling offshore. So I recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt these resolutions as I presented them. How do y'all feel about it?
I don't know.
So moved. There you go.
Second?
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Mary, none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Thank you. The next item is this map that you have in front of you. I've talked with most of you, I think, individually about this here or there. Steer me right if I'm not paraphrasing here. This is the, it's mostly about that LI2 part there in the right-hand part of the graphic. That's that big field between us over here by the school and the teacher housing that's in the neighborhood to the side of us here. There's a big plot of land there. And there's a possibility of the Dare Education Foundation doing additional teacher housing in that area. Now, long and storied history about how the first one happened. That was right before I got on the school board, 12 or 13 years ago, 14 years ago now. That area was actually zoned differently back then, and multifamily was allowed. So it's currently actually non-conforming. So the proposal here is to change it to LI2, which would allow it to have that use, additional uses like the teacher housing that's already there, and actually add a little bit higher density, if I'm not mistaken. And that's, density is our friend when we're trying to make things affordable. And all of this kind of aligns with what we want and need for our town, as well as for the county writ large. And all of this kind of aligns with what we want and need for our town as well as for the county writ large when it comes to the goals of the Dare Education Foundation, of course, to help the schools attract and retain the best teachers possible. And some of the tough barrier to entry to coming here from other places is the kind of sticker shock of the price of housing as well as the kind of the lack of it. So to be able to land here with a place to save that's very affordable in your first year as a first-year teacher or as a transferring teacher is super valuable. And then the other two little items is a kind of little triangular piece and another one that says change to L I two. These are more our little housekeeping measures and we thought, what a great time if we're gonna make one change to change them all simultaneously. So instead of having this kind of go through the developer process, we would just initiate it here on the town side and clean these things up to make, make them make sense. So the change to the, I'm gonna forget what that stands for.
Maritime.
Maritime.
Forest Environmental District.
Environmental District. That's too many words. So Maritime Forest Environmental District sort of aligns with what's right next to it already. That's unlike the stock.
It's part of Run Hill.
So it'll never be developed anyway. That just makes sense that it be that use. Doesn't really matter what it is, but it certainly makes more sense. So, and that other little parcel helped me, remind me what was going on with the other.
It was, it was the residential low that we'd like to change to L I two. It's, it was zone residential low when the map was done in the nineteen eighties. And it was based on what was actually back there. But what was, what's back there is actually.
Industrial.
Manufactured homes or, or mobile homes, which actually aren't allowed in the residential low zone.
Right, right.
So, but, so changing it to L I two, it would make everything back there conforming and it would also make it, if they were ever removed, that industrial businesses could go back there, which is what the intention of the zone was for. So.
It's all in that area that already is that.
Yes, it is.
So it's sort of a little island before and now it'll be contiguous with.
When they did the zoning maps in the eighties, they did it based on what the use was at the time. That's why if you look at our zoning map, you see this little square on the beach road that's commercial, that's Goombays. You see the square, this commercial back in, off of First Street, that's Oyster Point. So they, they actually drew the map based on what the actual uses on the ground were at the time. And this was just kind of an anomaly that if we're gonna change to L I two so that the teacher housing can happen to clean up these other things would just be beneficial in the long run and it'd make a lot more sense.
And it makes the current teacher housing conforming.
Correct. Because multifamily was allowed in the R L and then it got removed. And so the teacher housing is non-conforming as, as it sits right now, which means it can't expand.
This would allow them to actually even expand on that site as well as the adjacent.
Allow them to expand on the site and it would increase the density so they could actually put more units per acre than they could in the, in the residential low zone. And unless the tiering changed, it starts with teachers and then goes to B M S, firefighters, police.
Government.
And government. So it does benefit of, of big, big population.
Yeah, depending on what the economy does, yeah.
Correct.
And if we start this process, it actually will go back, it'll go through the planning board, correct?
Yeah, this would just be direction to staff to start the process and maybe take maps. And there's a lot of signage that needs to go up and adjacent property owners get.
Right.
Certified letters of the change and public hearings are set and it's a...
The planning board process, right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
This is not a decision. This is just, if, if y'all are in agreement with the idea, we'll go through the formal process.
It just, as, as pointed out, it was just a really good time to clean up some of these things. And the, the school board is gonna come, was gonna come and ask for their zoning change anyway. So this would just be town initiated.
And if you choose not to do it, they're gonna ask anyway.
And, and it's been pretty consistent with what you guys have tried to do as far as cleaning up whenever the opportunity is there. So it, I mean, it fits for me.
Yeah.
Let me ask the M F, the Matt, the Maritime Forest section there. What is that right now?
It is residential low. I think.
But it's owned, but it's owned and controlled by the.
Conservancy.
By the conservancy.
Conservancy, so it's never gonna have anything built.
It's, it's residential low.
Okay. So why, what's the need to change that?
It, it's just because of, it, it is, it is the Run Hill Conservatory and is part of the Nature Conservancy and the State Conservatory. And it's our most restrictive district so that it's for preservation.
Okay, which is what they're doing.
Because I know there's some talk about, there have been some talk about, is that, that's the middle school and the elementary school, correct?
Yes, this is not anywhere near the soccer field. It is in the state.
They talked about possibly, you know, fixing up those fields behind the schools.
This is nowhere near that.
Yeah, this is literally sand dunes.
Yeah, this is, this is.
I know there's a fence there. I'm trying to, I know there's, there's like a.
And you see the dunes behind those fields? That's where it starts. So it's not.
This is not any school property.
Okay.
None of it's owned by the school and the school doesn't have any authority to do anything to it. And the state's not gonna give up on.
It's where you go sledding when it's shadows.
It's where you go sledding. It's exactly where it is.
It's where you go sledding.
It'd be like for a teacher. I understand. I just want to, I, I understand. That's, that's fine.
It's just not that hard. I just wanted that thin line to be.
Then we will begin the process. Thank you.
Yeah, probably should have led with, this is just kicking over. That's a very.
Another process.
Process is better. Process. We're, we're a couple of process.
They said they're livered and slow the way they should. Exactly. All right. So that's all I have for the mayor's agenda. So the next item is the town manager's agenda.
Yes, sir, not this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing for me, there.
I'm back to consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Three items. Minutes from the October eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting, the monthly report, September twenty twenty-one. And schedule a public hearing for historical landmark destination designation, designation, excuse me, ordinance, thirty-two oh eight North Virginia Dare Trail. The Historical Landmark Committee did meet and reviewed it and are sending it to the board recommending a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented and a motion would be in order.
All right. So who? So moved?
Seconded.
So seconded? Any further discussion?
Shall we vote?
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Same agenda. Peanut Gallery. We have one more opportunity for you to speak at public comment. Going once, going twice. We will close public comments and we're up to that last item.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Great idea. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, fellas.